Welcome to the town council meeting for April 10, 2018. We'll open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Take a moment of silence to reflect on our duties here and remember all our first responders and veterans and military personnel home and away. Thank you. In accordance with the master of laws, we're taping the meeting. Is anybody else taped in the meeting? Nope. All right. Public comments? We don't have any. Council comments? None. Town manager report?
None.
Nothing. Move on. Next.
I can just tell you, I have been in nonstop meetings. I've been in court. I'm in court like three days this week for a lot of employment issues of the past that are just finally coming to a head. I did meet this morning with the veterans. We belong to a group of veterans. Is it a consortium? Hamden Munson and I think there's another. Were you part of that before, Paul?
Yeah, yes.
And I've asked, unfortunately for them, they invited me to the annual meeting and I said, "So how many veterans do we service and what services do we provide?" And their answers to all of that was, gee, that's a good question. We don't really know. So I met with the chairman of the committee this morning along with Carolyn and a very active, Terry Glusko, I think is his last name, who's very active in this new memorial thing. And we're asking for increased services to the veterans and more outreach. And the chairman actually said, "That's a great idea. We should have been doing it before now." So I think we will see improved services, even if it's just, I said, "Even if it's as simple as the agent has a list of other places that he can refer people to and say, 'You know, I don't handle that, but here's the list of agencies that you can go to.'" And I think this one probably would do, you know, help you. So they certainly deserve our assistance, especially the young are, do not seem to be the younger veterans. Those from Afghanistan and Iraq don't seem to be accessing the benefits that they have. And that seems to be, from checking that I've done with, there's a veterans group, I think it's the VA actually, in West Springfield. Somebody from there, Mr. Doe, had come into my office and said, "We're here to help and I'll be able to help you with a whole lot of stuff." So I think we're going to open some doors and increase the benefits to veterans. So that was a great thing today. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Item six, so approval of minutes. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the March 27, 2018, open session minutes as submitted. So move. Second. Move the second. Any further discussion? All fair?
Aye.
One last thing. Oh, you were here, that's right. Thank you, Tom. Subcommittees? Don?
Nothing on the first one. We're still trying to formulate a questionnaire. So I gotta probably push the group a little bit more on that, but that's, but number two, the planning matters subcommittee, I posted something on my, my personal town council Facebook page just to get some interest and find out what people are, what their thoughts are. And I've gotten some interesting feedback already. Our next meeting is going to be the 24th at nine o'clock at the, at the library. And then we'll hopefully have some type of correspondent report to the council, not necessarily finalized report, but something like where, what the feelings are for the, for our 24th meeting as well. I popped in when Denise was interviewing our new town planner, said a quick hello, gave her maybe a little heads up that I'm going to be meeting with her and going over some of the hot points regarding this project and, and really gonna, you know, invite her to our next meeting and hopefully get some insight that she can provide.
Good. Thanks.
She's claiming I'm being there.
Excellent.
All right. Licensing matters. We have a one-day liquor license for St. Paul the Apostle Church, April 28, 2018, five to 11 for a fundraising event. This one's with a live band and karaoke. There are some concerns. Tom, this is the one you have some concerns with the chief, right?
It's the second one.
The second one, okay. Never mind. Forget it. This one we don't have any issues with. So I'll entertain a motion to approve a one-day liquor license with the fee waived as requested by the applicant for St. Paul the Apostle Church for April 28, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. for a fundraising event with live band and karaoke. So move. Second. Move in second. Any further discussion?
I do. I have one comment on that. This group is coming before us tonight for two one-day licenses. And one is for, to, for their Vietnamese cultural committee to raise awareness within the Vietnamese committee and to, Vietnamese community and to promote that. To me, that is a community-based event, such as when we waive for other groups that give to scholarships. But the first one that, right now before us, is simply to raise funds for an organ in their choir. And I don't see that as community-based, so I personally wouldn't be in favor of waiving that particular fee. The other one, as it, when it comes before us, I would.
I'd agree with that.
Mike?
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
I just have one general comment. I think this is the fourth or fifth time that they've come before the council with regards to one-day liquor licenses this year. So the fourth. So just as a general statement, if, I don't want this to turn into a private club with a liquor license. If they're going to hold these fundraisers, maybe they can give us better notice, give us a list going into the future of how many they're talking about. Are we going to be, are we talking about 20 fundraisers for the year? I mean, we're only into April. We've got four.
They must have a calendar of events.
Yeah. So I'd like to see something like that in the future before we entertain a motion with them.
All right. So everybody's in agreement with the, with Kathy on the maintaining the fee? All right. So I'll read, do the motion to approve a one-day liquor license with a fee, without the fee waived as requested for St. Paul the Apostle from April 28, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. for a fundraising event with live band and karaoke. So move.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion?
The only thing is that they're clear with the police chief's comments, no music after 10 o'clock.
Correct.
The applicant's arriving now.
Yeah.
For the second one.
So all in favor?
Aye.
So on the second matter, we have a, the Vietnamese Cuisine Festival fundraising event. There's some significant concerns from the police chief, which he noted. There is no music after 10. They're expecting, approximate number of persons is 500.
Throughout the course of the day, not at the same time.
Well, we don't know. We don't know for sure.
I think the applicant just arrived.
So their attached concerns are on the public entertainment, outdoor public entertainment with 200 more persons. They have to get, would have to get a permit from the town manager for the outdoor entertainment piece of this. Normally it's supposed to be 45 days. The chief would have to sign off on that permit. The public station health regulations for the outdoor protocol have to be followed. There's asked to be prescribed hours. And so the chief's questions, which he didn't have answered yet, is there an admission or tenant's charge for profit being collected as stated in paragraph A? And if so, the application requires live entertainment permits. Alcohols are being served 10 to 10, but this is, alcohol's going to be from one to six. And the expectation of 500 people, which is open to the public, with alcohol being served, they're recommending one police officer be hired for the event. So.
What, we want to find out the answer to number one?
Yeah. You want to step up, sir? Just introduce yourself and your address, please.
I'm Mr. Ben Nguyen. I'm from St. Paul Church.
Have a seat.
New chairs?
Yeah, new chairs. So for your event for June 24th, do you have a permit for the entertainment through the town manager's office?
We have not yet. May I just clarify, when it's, when we say 500 people, we anticipate 500 people throughout the whole day. It's not, so if, the main event could be right after the mass, which will be 12 o'clock.
Okay.
So we expect to be about with 200 people up, after the mass. That would be the most crowded we're going to have. And we are expecting that. We're hoping that people will come and go, come and go throughout the whole day. So it's not going to be 500 people at the same time.
Okay. All right. And then.
Entertainment license.
So they don't have an entertainment permit yet?
So if you come to my office, my assistant has a whole packet of information that you need to fill out.
Okay.
Make sure you have the insurance and, you know, that it goes through all the, for the entertainment piece. So I'm the town manager if you come to my office.
I will see you tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Would be conditional upon a police officer?
Yeah, one police.
Do you need any other conditions?
Police officer.
Was it required?
Recommended.
And then for the town managers, completed paperwork?
Yeah. So we have to get the contingent upon the fact that they get this entertainment permit and have hired one police officer for this event. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license with the fee waived as requested by the applicant for St. Paul the Apostle Church for June 24, 2018, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for Vietnamese Cuisine Festival fundraising event with live band and karaoke under the conditions that the applicant receive a entertainment permit and hire one police officer for the day, for the event. So move. Second. Move in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a thing for discussion of proposed policy for tip certification for off-premises liquor licensee staff members. So this came up with the beer shop. All their employees are tip certified. So it was a question on whether we wanted to include that in licensing for next year to make all off-premises, package stores, I guess for lack of a better term, off-premises liquor establishments require that their employees are tip certified. So that's just out for discussion if anybody wants to weigh in on it.
It would seem to me that a private business like the beer shop, that their insurance provider would want that so that there is no liability that patrons come in, purchase alcoholic beverages, and then get carried away with it in the parking lot and then, you know, some event breaks out that requires police intervention. And at that point, if the individuals, the employees of the establishment are at least schooled a little bit in knowing when to serve or sell and not to sell, to me, it goes against the integrity of the establishment. I don't think it's, I have not ever sat for the tip certification, but my sense from talking to folks is it's not an overbearing. We're not talking about sitting for log exams.
Right.
I would think it makes, it's a prudent practice that helps us, help the establishments do a good job of their, the use of their license.
Yeah, it's a one-day event. It's generally about five hours long. I've attended several over the years. So tip certified. It's not difficult. It just makes a commitment. You have to commit to it and go for the day. And it's offered by freely, by many of the local distributors. It depended on your volume of business with them. And others, they charge a small fee. So it's not outrageous.
I don't, it doesn't sound like something that would be overbearing for.
The employer.
The employer, right. Package stores and such to make sure that this, it's just an added layer of security for them in the long run.
Yeah.
You know, I think this is one of those situations, kind of like with the restaurants where, you know, it's probably prudent to get a little bit of feedback because I think it might not be a huge cost, but I think you have to pay the employee to go take the tip certification.
It's a potential cost.
If you're a small business, you have to track the licenses and certifications, which are not required by the state. So then we would have to police it. So I'm not saying that I'm against it. I understand the point and the value to it, but, you know, maybe this is one of those times where we probably just, you know, ask a few people and take a poll because there might be things that we think are innocuous that really aren't.
Tom said that it's now an online course.
Yeah. Yeah, I had to do it for my, going back to Washington, New England for the homecoming alumni events. You can get tip certified online now.
I agree with Joe. I think.
It hurts to talk to the businesses.
Yeah, exactly.
Kathy, why don't we do it with the licensing subcommittee?
We can do that.
There's no urgency with this.
Right.
Yeah, get a list of the package stores we have in town.
If we move to require it, it wouldn't go into effect until January 1st anyway.
Yeah, right. So we have plenty of time to figure it out.
I would ask that a lot of these people that work in that industry come from another job that was similar. So if they're tip certified to another business that they worked for, or I should say another employer, would that certification carry forward? So I'm saying that if half their employees worked somewhere else prior to coming there, they might, or half of them could be on board anyway, so.
And on the other hand, I know we don't have any in town, but say Big Y or Stop &amp; Shop were to have a beer and wine section, then would you have all their employees tip certified? I mean, that could be, you know, very onerous for them, so.
Good question to thought. A lot of stuff to think about.
That's a, that's a fair point.
Easy enough.
Just a, just a quick segue on that tip certification. I had a constituent talk to me who goes to St. Michael's Church and said that they stopped doing the, their St. Patty's event because they didn't have anybody to, who was tip certified over there. Because I said, "How do you have a St. Patty's event without serving beer?" And I said, "Well, fair point."
That's a good question.
Yeah, but next time I see her, I'll say, "You're pretty easy classes. You can do them online."
Look it up. Google it.
Google it.
All right. Little business. Discussion of town manager interview per Article 3, Section 2 of the charter. So I had Jeanie work on a document that we all have looked at at one point. My thoughts on this are to, I have spoken with the attorney general's office. I also spoke with the town municipal attorney regarding this matter. And we are able to actually do a subcommittee to collate all the information, I think. So the seven documents that we have, we have a subcommittee. My suggestion that we have a subcommittee put together, three of us, to actually put that information together so that the summary document can be presented at the open meeting. By charter, we have to present the summary document at the meeting, not all the individual documents as required. Obviously, that subcommittee meeting is open to the public. So the transparency piece is still there. It just would be a matter of taking all the documents that we have, averaging out all the scores, making sure that all the commentary is included, and go from there. So my suggestion would be to do a subcommittee.
How many members do you want?
I'd like to do three. I think that would be easy.
I can help.
And it's not, I mean, it's not a quorum, but by charter, we're, our subcommittee meetings are all public anyway, so.
It's going to be posted and.
I'm thinking that we would have the forms in by the 24th of, which is our next meeting. And then shortly thereafter, maybe a couple of days after that or whatever, we would get together with the subcommittee, put the document together so that the final document can be presented on the 8th, May 8th.
I could be on it if you want.
All right. Joe?
You have to help.
All right. Easy enough. So Kathy, Joe, Paul. Very good.
Do you want to try and pick a time?
We can, when we adjourn.
Yeah, and then we'll get it to Tom so we can get it posted. You know, we'll have it posted essentially three weeks ahead of time.
So you did formally name the sub, the members of the committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Paul, Joe, and Kathy.
Got you. Okay.
And actually that, so if we can get the documents, if everybody can fill out their commentary on it and get it to me for the next meeting, then I can get it through. I figured as much, but that's, that's good. Oh, you're done already? I don't think I put a date on that.
I wasn't sure if we were doing it tonight.
I wasn't either. But now we're good. So new business, we have the April 24th meeting start at 5:00 p.m. The first discussion is the budget presentation. I talked to Denise about this. And then we have a couple of public hearings. There was some suggestions to modify the agenda because of the public hearings, but we had discussed it. We'll start the budget discussion at 5:00. We will stop the budget discussion if we have questions and continue past so that the public hearings don't have to wait. I think that's a reasonable request, Pat. Thank you. But if we have to continue after that, then we will. But we won't make the public hearing people wait, which is one of the suggestions that we had for that. The other thing is, as we get to the budget, there's going to be, obviously we know on the agenda for tonight, there'll be a budget presentation by Denise and Sarah. And regarding that, we're going to have a few weeks between now and our next meeting to kind of digest the budget and come up with formulaic questions. I just asked that if we have questions, instead of all seven of us going to Denise, that the questions be funneled through me or Mike. That way we can go to Denise and the seven of us aren't even repeating the same question, asking for the same information. Just make their job a lot easier because they're still trying to get it all done. And I'll make sure that you guys get the information, Mike and I'll make sure you guys get the information you need. Other than that, I think we can move on to financial matters. You want to do the presentation first or should we take out of order the favor?
I think we should make that, that guy just sit.
Couple more hours. For 44,000, you can wait.
Bruce, just cover your first rest today.
No, so, yeah.
I'll entertain a motion now to take D2 out of order. Is there a second?
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So at this point, we're going to go to D2. We have an emergency request for funding of a vehicle replacement. Come on up, Bruce.
Come on down.
Bruce Fenny, Department of Public Works. I'm here before you to request emergency funding for a new vehicle for the Department of Public Works. We had our truck 12, it's actually our mechanic's truck. It actually goes on our road calls on a pretty regular basis. It actually has a fuel tank in the back for fueling up all of our equipment out on the job sites and everything else. The truck was totaled in an accident on February 6 while the mechanics were going to pick up some, some parts at a, at a store. Maya unfortunately reimbursed us only $4,683 for the vehicle and kind of got ahead of myself a little bit. The existing truck was a Ford F-350, a 1999, and over, around 100,000 miles on it. So currently, we have no vehicle for the mechanics. They are using whatever vehicles left in the yard if they have to go out on a road call. So we're kind of at a, at a loss right now. We don't have any extra vehicles. So that's why I've come before you this evening to request $44,303.85 for a new utility body F-350 in-kind vehicle for that replacement.
I am recommending that we fund this capital project using our free cash.
So we're looking for a net, you know, after, after the insurance reimbursement, you're looking for a little under $40,000?
Yes.
So was, I'm sorry.
That would have been my question.
So this was used as a primary plow vehicle?
It was actually a plow vehicle and used as a, like you said, primary vehicle for the mechanics to use.
Right. And so the existing plow couldn't be salvaged?
No.
The insurance company wouldn't allow that?
No. I actually wanted to take the utility body off to try to save some costs, but the insurance company would not allow me to touch that vehicle in any way, shape, or form. And actually, we just put a new plow in, plow frame on that vehicle.
Can you buy the total vehicle?
In the fall. Excuse me?
Can you buy the total vehicle?
Well, then we wouldn't have obviously gotten anything back. So they actually, based on the utility body, because I asked that question to the insurance company, and they were going to take off another $900 off the reimbursement. So.
If you took the plow frame off?
No, the utility body.
Oh, okay.
But the plow frame was, was bent. It was no good.
Okay.
So for $900, we could save 57? 100? Is it salvageable? Is the body, is the?
No, the truck is gone. It's been totaled away. It's been totaled.
It's gone now?
Yes, the frame was bent. I mean.
I was talking about the utility body, so.
Yes, we don't have another utility body. So like you said, if we took this vehicle that you have before you on your quote from MHQ, we don't have another utility body to put on that.
No, sorry, I may have misunderstood. Instead of giving you $4,600, they would have given you $3,700 and let you take the utility body off?
No, no, no.
I misunderstood that.
We were trying to, like you said, in the, in the first, when the first incident happened, we were, we were trying to see if we can salvage some of the parts off that vehicle and actually go out and try to find a used vehicle. But we were unsuccessful in finding one that would meet our needs. So we ended up obviously quoting the whole, the whole vehicle out. And based on the insurance company's recommendation, obviously, if we took parts off the old vehicle, it would reduce the reimbursement from the insurance company.
I've got a few questions. First is, it's my understanding that no one was, our employee was not injured?
No, it was not.
So that's a good thing?
Yes.
So I'm glad to hear that piece. The second question I have is, is this highway, water, sewer?
Highway.
Highway. So this is 100% uses in the highway department?
Yes.
Okay, so the funding would come out of the general fund. This past year, we had two vehicles on the capital plan for purchase. One was an F-350.
Okay.
Has that been purchased yet?
For, last year? Yes, yes. That was for the highway department, for the, for actually our asphalt crews.
Okay. So that vehicle was not available?
No.
For you. So you're really, literally down a vehicle.
Yes, exactly. And like you said, the day-to-day operations, especially with our foreman and everything else, they usually drive F-350s, the smaller vehicles for the parks department. So those vehicles go, go first, obviously on a day-to-day basis, then the dump trucks are secondary. We do have a few dump trucks in the yard, but unfortunately, working out of a, a big dump truck is, is very difficult.
Yeah. I got a question for you, Bruce. This vehicle was, had to be at some point on the five-year capital plan, correct?
Um, I believe it was. I don't have.
I don't know what year it was, but it's somewhere on that plan.
I believe so.
Yeah, it was a 99.
It was a 99, I think it was.
Okay. So it's just going to move up on the priority list, basically, and not fall off the back end?
It's filled, yeah. It'll be removed.
Yeah, absolutely.
So at some point, we're spending this money.
Exactly. We're just spending.
Nobody really thought.
Exactly. Right, so next year.
No, my biggest concern with the questioning is to make sure that, you know, as we all know, and most of us are familiar with, is the funding sources between water, sewer, and highway.
Sure.
Were not followed in the past. And I want to make sure that the funding for that vehicle is coming out of the correct fund.
Yep, truck twelve was assigned to highway. And we have obviously certain vehicles that are assigned to our water enterprise fund and our sewer enterprise fund.
Okay.
Yep.
Question.
So this vehicle, twenty-eighteen F-350?
Yep.
Utility body and a plow?
Yes.
So the whole package is in there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question.
Mike?
Where do you, when you buy that truck, is it coming outfitted with a Fisher plow? Is that what you're using on the truck?
Yes, I believe it has a Fisher plow, yes.
Does, do you, does that go over to Bart's truck and have that installed? Do you buy it as a package, or is that something you, a service you provide after?
Actually, MHQ actually does the whole nuts and bolts, they do everything. Some companies, we actually used a different company to purchase our new truck thirteen. We had a little, I guess, a delayed response when it come to MHQ in the past as far as the amount of vehicles they were processing, and it took like, you know, probably eight to nine months before we get the vehicle. But we, obviously, we're out of season where people aren't ordering a lot of municipalities are ordering vehicles, so they have one actually on the lot, we've checked, so it'd be a quick turnaround for the department.
And that's where I was going with that. In other words, we don't have to purchase it, have downtime, sitting there waiting for a plow.
Exactly.
Put the truck down, put the plow frame on.
Sure.
Sounds good.
Anybody else? All right, so at this point, we'll entertain a motion to approve the emergency request of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred, twenty dollars and ten cents for funding of a DPW replacement vehicle from free cash. That would be the net amount minus your insurance.
Yeah.
So moved?
Yep, so net of the insurance, yep.
So it's moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in the second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Just dumb question for procedure. If it's an emergency vote, do we need to just declare it was a roll call, a roll call? Or what do we do at town meeting on these things? Guys, remember?
We've done emergency monies before.
Before, I'm just curious, I'm just trying.
Yes, we did it for the sewer a couple of months ago.
And was that a roll call or no?
We'll say August.
No. I mean, it's a unanimous, it's a, you know, it's an effective point, I'm just curious for a point of procedure.
And so now we'll make an, entertain a motion to go back into order and take D one.
So moved?
Second.
Who would you say the further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Denise?
So first, there was a request for an update on the current year's capital plan. So you pass those. Do I give you one of these, John? Need one more? Oh.
Got a couple?
Three, four, five, six. A budget presentation. At the end of the day, I thought about doing this electronically, you know, doing a slide presentation, but it seems like every time we've had that, it just doesn't seem to work, and I didn't want to get into that. So unless it's a problem for you all to have the paper, it's probably the easiest way to go. I have it on a thumb drive, but I just was a little skeptical that it doesn't seem to work out. I think the last time-
Paper's flag.
Wasn't the last time the big mixed-use guys and?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. So I'll start with the second page. Once again, this year's budget presentation was completed with collaboration from all town departments. Departments were asked to stay within two percent increase over last year's budget. This will allow for employees contracted increases along with a small amount of growth if needed within the department's budget. In addition, the Director of Finance and I met with every department head to discuss their needs, any supplemental expenses, and the plans for the future. And you should have enough detail in here that will really bring to light all the pieces. This year's presentation has more pieces in it, just because as I get more familiar with what you want, what we have, it's a more thorough presentation than last year. Also, the capital plan process was accomplished earlier in the budget process with each department's capital requests discussed with the requister, ranked in priority for safety, infrastructure needs, prior year's requests, projects that would allow for future growth of programs and services and/or create efficiencies that will lend to better use of personnel. The plan recommended in this presentation is updated from the previously recommended plan and reflects a well-rounded plan that addresses each of those priorities while addressing East Long Meadow's future needs. We are also very careful as we're doing it to make sure that there's no department that is slighted, so that there's at least something for each department. The expenditure highlights, in the second year of the town council, town manager government, the budget continues to reflect some changes beyond the doing business as usual type of expenses. As example, a number of departments have new personnel at both the management and the support staff level. As each position is brought on board, the salary is looked at carefully to be sure it is within a competitive range, both with, like communities, but also like positions. And there have been pieces that have been out of sync, both too high and too low. We found with a couple of positions, we weren't attracting people, and then when we looked at what the salary had been, it was just not even competitive. So additionally, departments that have had staffing changes such as Public Works, Building and Recreation have looked carefully at their organizations to be sure they are addressing the needs, the town's needs, in the most efficient way. This again has led to shifts in costs, some savings and some increases. Another challenge for both the current and the two thousand nineteen budget has been the best, most accurate way to address the plan to move our emergency services dispatching to civilians rather than police officers. During the two thousand eighteen budget year, we investigated three possible partnerships for civilian dispatch. Having done thorough analysis of the best options for East Long Meadow, we're now close to finalizing a plan with the Joint Dispatching Service with the town of Hampton. We met yesterday, I proposed an intermunicipal agreement with them that they seemed to think was a good plan going forward. They presented it to their Board of Selectmen last night, has to go to town meeting for them, May fifteenth, so our participation in that hinges on their town meeting process and approval. In addition, there are some supplemental budget requests that I felt warranted discussion at the council level. They're listed on a slide in this presentation entitled Supplemental Budget Requests. At the April twenty-fourth council meeting, reserved for budget discussions, all town staff will be available to explain their budget and supplemental requests and answer any questions you may have. Finally, as the school board is a major portion of the proposed budget, they will present their detail on their budget on the twenty-fourth. The following pages have a high level and detail of this evening's budget proposal. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Sarah. You're okay, we haven't rehearsed this, but we've kind of lived it for the last couple of weeks.
So the first, the next slide that you see is a summary of the sources and uses. So you have the type on the left-hand side, then you have the FY eighteen budget, which is what had been approved by the town council on May twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, the FY nineteen recommended budget, and the increase or decrease from that and the percentage. So the top portion has the sources, next has the uses, additional uses, and then your total. So if we look, the general fund sources, so your revenue, we are anticipating a four-point zero-three percent increase. For our total general fund budget expenses, we are anticipating a four-point-three-seven percent increase. The other uses, those are our capital projects, the funding of stabilization, OPEB, compensated absences, and other charges such as your state charges, your abatements, that kind of thing. We are anticipating a decrease of nine-point-zero-eight percent. So overall, our total general fund uses would increase three-point-seven-eight percent, thus leaving an excess of one million, four hundred and eight thousand, three ninety-seven, which would be about fifteen-point-six-two percent. This would be essentially part of our unused levy capacity. Okay? Now, if we turn the page, we're going to see, this is what is included in this proposed budget. We have the second year of the three-year phase-in of the fire department. As we had discussed previously, the fire department is going to have a basic life support services starting in July, and this includes the hiring of the next phase of firefighters and EMTs, which is in line with what had been approved last year. So last year, the estimate was about five hundred and seventy-two thousand for the second year, and actually, Paul's estimate was a little high, and it's more around the five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar range. Continuation of funding of the civilian dispatchers for police and fire calls, which is what Denise had mentioned, and so that you will see in the police department budget. So it's a bit of an increase compared to what we had estimated last year, but there is a difference in outsourcing. Then you have all of the benefits and all those related other expenses all wind up showing up in the police line, whereas in last year's, it was shown in multiple lines on our budgets.
And last year, it was projected that we would try for the half-year, which was going to be two hundred sixty-five thousand, if I remember correctly. This year, we're incorporating it in the police budget, and it's three hundred eleven thousand. But it's sort of a contracted service kind of thing, we're paying half of the expenses. It also will, at the end of the day, put us in a position where down the road, we might be splitting that six hundred-plus-thousand-dollar expense three ways if we find another partner that might help us. It also provides in dispatch for the future of the states mandating two dispatchers on at a time, which we don't have the luxury of doing now, nor does Hampton, right? Hampton does not either, I don't think. They don't have two dispatchers.
The station could accommodate it, but that's what we're facing going forward. So if this didn't work, you'd have two.
Right, we don't have the manpower for it.
You'd have two here and two there, it's just a big duplication in labor.
So at the end of the day, it's certainly a big plus.
The line item for civilian dispatch, is that depicted on here? The money that we put aside? I kind of, I know it was in the two-hundred range, but I don't really know exactly.
It's three-eleven, and it's-
And it's within the police department budget, so department number two-ten, it's included in that total number.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
No problem. So if we turn to the next slide, this is detail of our sources, so our revenue. So we take the prior year property tax levy, we add the prop two-and-a-half increase, we add our projected new growth, which, after discussion with the assessing board, it is better to remain conservative there. We did have a higher growth in that this year, but a lot of it was just a one-time because it was that personal property revale. So we want to make sure that we are realistic with our expectations, and we are seeing a decline in the new growth. To give us our projected tax levy limit, then we add the voted debt exclusions, so as we pay off the debt, that changes, so that's why that number goes down. It gives us our projected allowable property tax levy. Then we add the total projected state aid. The state aid numbers that I used for fiscal nineteen are the governor's budget, which as of today is the most recent budget that is on the website. So as we get closer than, and they finalize more of their budgets, we can become more accurate. But typically, we get more than what the governor's budget is anyway, so I feel that this is a pretty conservative number, even though it's not a guarantee, it's still a pretty conservative number. Then we have the state school construction reimbursement, which we have until two thousand twenty-one. The total projected local receipts have increased. I base that increase off of our actual fiscal seventeen activity and that we did better than projected. So I feel very confident that we will meet or exceed these local receipts projections. Then we have our transfers, which would be from the CPA fund. So what happens is that the general fund pays the principal and interest for the community preservation bond, and the community preservation fund reimburses us. So that's all it is, it nets zero on our total, but we do need to show both the in and the out of it. And then that gives us our total general fund sources of sixty million, seven forty-five, seven ninety-five, which is the four-point-zero-three percent increase. Our next page, we start the general fund operating budget. So we have our total general government listed here. Then we have public safety, public health. On the next page is public works, education, culture and recreation, human services, insurance, and debt service. Now, on the couple slides after, there's a general notes page, and so I give you a little bit more detail about some of the ones that you're going to see an unusual percentage increase, so I'd like to just highlight those. I'm not going to read line by line, I believe you can all read this on your own. But, so some of the things that I did want to bring to your attention is that the above, that this is the operating fund budget, so it does not include any expenses related to water, sewer, or LCAT. Those are all enterprise funds, and you'll see them on other slides. The next thing is that the balances of the compensated absences fund, the OPEB trust and the stabilization fund, I did provide you what the June thirtieth number was and what it is as of today, so that if you are curious as to where our reserves stand, you can see that we are in very good shape for all of that. I also provided our free cash certification, which was four million, five hundred and seventy thousand, two seventeen at June thirtieth. As of today, well, as of prior to fifteen minutes ago, we had two million, five hundred and seventy thousand, two seventeen left in there. So still a very hefty amount to be able to have at our disposal. So the departments that I would like to specifically bring to your attention, department number one-fifty-one is legal. We are increasing that. You will see that legal services is going from ninety-three thousand for the fiscal eighteen budget to a hundred and thirty-three thousand for the, excuse me, two thousand nineteen budget. We are basing this off of actual experience that we have seen in two thousand eighteen. A lot of it is due to the change in how we're using them and also our current caseload.
I also had Marge pull the five-year history, because I said I'm pretty conservative using legal, I mean, I need them for court, but drafting documents and then sending them to Jim or wherever, I do a lot of that. And for the past five years, it's been a hundred twenty, it just, it's been budgeted low and then funding added. This is a more accurate way of funding it, of budgeting it. It's a real number. And we all need to remember the cost of legal five years ago, the hourly rate compared to the hourly rate today. If anybody's needed legal, it's quite a bit. So this is a good number. I think as the government settles down, as personnel, all of those challenges settle down, we won't be using them to create more regional dispatch kinds of things, nor to defend us against some of the personnel issues that we inherited. So I think that number will be a solid number and possibly, in the future, be able to go down.
The next department, unless, is there a question?
Sure. When you're negotiating contracts now, you know, it's you, right? Negotiating them, so obviously, in the past, when we had a Board of Selectmen, we would have somebody from our legal firm with us, which obviously bumped up the fees a bit.
Right.
Especially in the more contentious debates about one of the-
Or when you have four in one year.
Yes, oh, yeah.
So I'm not making substantive document changes so that it's, you know, it's a contract that's already there. It's the pieces of the contract that are being changed, not the substance of the document. So I can handle that, and if they get a little contentious, then I will be bringing in an attorney, for sure, for legal, I mean, for labor.
Okay. The next department I'd like to draw your attention to is department one-fifty-five IT. If you were to compare to the May twenty-third, two thousand seventeen budget that was approved, you will notice that it's a slightly different number than what you see on this, so I'm just explaining why. And the difference is that in two thousand eighteen, we had the GIS individual who was budgeted fifty percent to highway, and the remaining amount was to enterprise funds. So it will still stay with the enterprise funds for the fifty percent, but that first fifty percent is now being moved out of DPW and has moved to IT, and that happened in fiscal eighteen, and so that's why I'm reflecting it in the budget, because otherwise, it would show a skewed increase in that department's budget. Also, in an effort to consolidate like items, some of the telephones have moved also from highway into IT, because IT does the phones. So I added those. And the last piece is that, as many of you are aware, that there is a bookkeeper that is shared by several departments, including IT and Recreation, and in the past, IT budgeted a hundred percent of that individual's salary, and then at the end of the year, we would actually move it based on what the actuals were. So what I did was I removed that portion out of the eighteen and put it into Recreation, because this year, we have Recreation budgeting for that bookkeeper's time instead of having it all in IT. So it's not a change overall, it was just a change in the presentation there. So I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to that. Next is department two-twenty, Fire. The increase is due, as I mentioned, to the second phase-in of the full-time Fire Department with the basic life support ambulance services, and it's approximately five hundred and fifty thousand. Next is department three-hundred, this is the school. So the increase is primarily due to outsourcing transportation. As you are aware, we have agreed to outsource transportation starting July first, two thousand eighteen. Related to that would be that there are certain benefits that will come out of other departments within the general fund and move to the school. So you will see that, so it artificially increases the increase in the school department. It was five hundred and seven thousand, four eighty-seven in the fiscal eighteen number. So without that, then the budget for the school department has increased one-point-eight-two percent, so they did stay within the two percent recommendation. Next is department four-twenty-one, Highway, and this is just showing the decrease due to the GIS and the phones, as we mentioned previously.
Bruce was so generous to give all that to the IT department.
Next is department five-forty-one for Veterans Services. The increase is due to actual current activity. We are seeing that we are providing more benefits to our veterans within the town, which is a great thing, and that it's looking- The increase is due to actual current activity. We are seeing that we are providing more benefits to our veterans within the town, which is a great thing, and that it's looking like that we will continue and that that will increase. So that is why you see an increase in the veteran services budget.
But that does, we get reimbursed for those expenses from, it takes a while to get the reimbursement, but a lot of that increased budget comes back to us in, from the, is it federal or, or state level?
It's, it's from the state level, and it's not 100%, but it is the majority of it. So we do submit that, but there is a time delay in it, so it, it doesn't happen right away. It's usually at least 12 to 18 months lag time. So we do get that, though. The last that I wanted to bring your attention to is department 630, recreation. And this is just that other part of the bookkeeper's salary that I had spoken about earlier. So those are the highlights, but please look this over, and, and if you have any questions, we're more than happy to answer that.
Item 141, assessor.
Yes.
I see an increase in that. Is that? I, I was speaking with one of the assessors, Christine Solner, and I was kind of saddened that she's not going to ask to be reappointed, and-
She doesn't want. It's not that she's not being asked.
I, I've had a conversation with her, and she said, part of the, you know, she wrote me a, a letter, and I talked to her, and is, the question is education. Christine, Christine, we all can agree, has a resume that any town would be proud of.
Absolutely.
And she would be willing, at least she told me, unless she changed her mind in the last couple of weeks, to at least go for a couple more years. And the concern is on, is the education budget. Is this increase addressing the education for the assessors?
No, it does not address that. It's, it's not a change in what we had previously done. So in fiscal 18, we set a limit as to how much per board member for education purposes in order to provide education to our staff level. Because what was happening in the past was that essentially we'd run out of money after doing the board, that then our staff were not progressing. By being able to do this slight shift and giving them, say, okay, you can use this amount of money however you wish on the credits, so, you know, use it to what you would like, then we have actually enabled one of our staff level to become certified within the state, because now we actually were able to send them to go get the rest of their courses needed. So to increase our whole education level of the entire department.
Is it also, if one isn't using the money, isn't it smart, or just a question, does it make sense to aggregate it? So in other words, let's say, you know, I have, you know, three lawyers sharing space in our office, and I say, listen, I'm going to a seminar on such and such. And I go to the seminar, and then I have all the notes and stuff, and I end up sharing with the other two attorneys. So if it's only one person using and the person doesn't need it, and that's in the budget, does it make sense to say that, that other person can assign the money that's allocated to another person by agreement, and that person can end up using it, and it's still within the confines of the same budget?
There's, there's more to that whole training that I can talk to you offline about.
I'm just talking, what, future, in the future, let's say.
Certainly, we do that, we do that anyway. Within departments, if, I, I always encourage, if I go to something, bring cop, I bring copies back for whoever. I know I've, I've asked other department heads to do exactly that. But for certification purposes, they need to be there to be certified.
I'm just gonna try and clarify what you were saying. Basically, what you're saying, let's say it's $500 per person for three people, there's 1,500 bucks there. If I only use 500, but Don doesn't want to use his, and I want to go to something else, can you give me the 500? Can I use that 500?
We could.
Like, there's a total fund, correct, for like 1,500 for training. I'm just using round numbers, right? Doesn't matter who uses it.
Right.
Right? It's not strictly limited to, like, one person can go for 500, 500, 500. It's 1,500 for the board to use as they need it.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense. I mean-
Am I understanding that right? Because I just want to make sure that-
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay. But that wasn't, the way it was in the past. In the past, it was 500, 500, 500. I couldn't say, hey, you know what, Kevin, I can't make this thing, but it's a really good event, and I know it's a little higher than the budget, take my 500, and you go to the event.
I don't know that.
2018 was the first year that we tried this. None of those board members have approached me that they had any issues with that. So, I mean, that's certainly a discussion that I could have with any of them, that they brought that forward.
If you could, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure.
I, I have one question.
Sure.
I know we're gonna take this out and review it and come back. How would you like the questions asked in the open meeting, or would you like the list prior to?
Certainly, I'm prepared. I have all the detail here. So I think at the next meeting, you'll have the time to have gathered your, your thoughts. Kevin, you said something about passing questions through you or Mike?
Yeah. It gets easier, I think. That way, everybody's not, you're not answering seven of the same questions, seven different questions, seven different people.
My way of answering questions is to answer, if I get a, if I get questions from you, it's to everybody, so that everybody has the same answers.
If it's something, for instance, that you plan to ask at that open meeting, I'm sure all the department heads would appreciate at least having a heads-up as to what that question is.
But through the chairman.
But absolutely through the chairman, to be able to then prepare. And in, in your question, you could specify whether you want that answer before the meeting, or whether you plan to be asking that at the meeting for that department head to be prepared for, whatever question it might be.
What about questions that are still outstanding?
I have, I have a few that I still owe you, that are sort of history kind of. I know one of them had to do with the casino money, and I have-
But that's been answered. Paul was kind enough to fill me in on that one.
So I have a couple. I know Sarah has a couple. We have been nonstop with budget and a lot of other things, but certainly those can get answered. I was looking at them.
So you don't want me to recap them and send them back to you?
No, no. I have, I have them mostly sketched out in mind. I don't know about Sarah doing the research she needed to do. And as far as questions at the next meeting, certainly every department head is going to be there. They know their budget intimately well.
We should come in two weeks, or four weeks, two weeks in a row, two times in a row. Boy!
So, so I would think, without having a huge list of questions ahead of time, maybe to not have them all answered to you prior to the meeting, they will all be here to answer everything that, that, that's, that's the point of that meeting.
Right. My last question is, I, just glancing through the package, obviously for the first time. There are no revolving funds in here?
The very last page.
Is there?
Yep.
Okay, so they're all summarized in there?
Yes, they are.
I believe we need to vote on those every year?
No. So we need, excuse me. So the bylaw states the formation of them, so that's different than previously. But yes, all of the chapter 53 E and a half, which is identified on the, the slide, those ones do need an appropriate, an amount not to exceed voted by the town council. But there is one revolving account, the recreation, that's under section 53D, and that does not require any vote, but we did provide it for informational purposes, because we still require that department to provide it. But it does not need a vote. Okay?
Can I ask you a question, just a point of clarity on revolving funds? I think I know the answer to it, but I just want to make sure for everybody. But, so once they're established, they're establishing the money's not to exceed whatever, right? Whatever we decide, whatever the figure is that we decided. Once they're established, it's your guys' real responsibility on the operations piece of that for the expenditures that come out of those to be in accordance with the Mass General law, correct? So as long as we get a picture of what it is, for example, and I'll use the water and sewer, because that's an easy one.
But that's not revolving.
Well, all right, the rec one, or whatever.
The solid waste for trash.
Right. So you can decide, all right, now the recycling coordinator will-
Correct.
Salary comes out of that, because they're solely employed for that purpose or whatever.
Right. Very strict parameters around any revolving-
I was just trying to get to the point that it's your sort of area.
To make sure that-
To make sure the expenditures out of those funds, once they're established, is in accordance with the Mass General.
Absolutely, because we don't want to get nailed at the audit that we're not, we're allowing things outside of the fund. The, the document that Sarah prepared actually has what the restrictions are for the funds. So it should, it should probably answer a lot of the questions that you have.
And as, whenever bills are submitted for, for payment, we do review them to make sure that they meet Mass General laws. So regardless whether they are operating fund, enterprise fund, revolving fund, a grant, that is part of what my department does, is to check to make sure that it meets all the Mass General requirements for payment in general. And then if it's in a fund that has a specific restriction, that we are questioning those as well. And we, we do do that. You can ask any department head that I do question on a regular basis, just to make sure that, that we understand and that it's documented. So sometimes something might look like one thing, but it was actually something that didn't relate to it, and so then we'll add notes on there. And so that then you can see that, because we also do scan all of these invoices and support into our system, and you can see that on the open checkbook online at any time.
Thank you.
With regard to, or follow up with what Kevin was asking, one of my concerns, and it's been ongoing, is with revolving funds. When salaries come out of revolving funds, under state law, they're required to take out all the health insurance and the OPEB responsibilities. Are we doing that?
So out of a revolving fund?
Out of a revolving fund, when they pay the salaries. If you pay a salary out of revolving fund, you need to remove all the other costs under the revolving fund as well. And that was one of my questions I asked earlier, that I want to make sure is answered. That's one of my concerns.
Right. So, so for instance, out of, under section 53F, which is the enterprise funds, absolutely you are required to do that, and we are doing that for water, sewer, and LCAT, because it's required.
This is revolving.
Under section 53D, which is a revolving, is the recreation. It is prohibited to pay anybody that is a full-time salary out of there. You are only allowed to pay part-time, which is a non-benefit eligible individual. So therefore, there wouldn't be any benefits, and we, we don't pay that. Out of the revolving account, I am unaware of that requirement, but I can double-check it. But as of this time, we are paying the salaries out of there and not benefits.
Yeah, I would look into that, because my understanding is that, that is an obligation from the town side to make sure that that fund-
I will make sure to have an answer for you at the next meeting.
Which ones, Sarah? Which ones?
So he's questioning the ones under section 53E and a half.
So it would be solid waste, council on aging and the health department.
Yes. So the sharps, which doesn't have a person out of it. The fitness-
Council on Aging might.
The Council on Aging does have, say, a fitness direct, a fitness person that would be running it. Most of those are-
Yeah.
Most of those are outsourced.
Most of those 50, the 53E and a half ones aren't full-time or full-time.
Right. No, they are not.
Certainly, solid waste is not, and health department doesn't have any, but-
Right, but the Council on Aging does have one person that does do a little bit of her time related to the fitness room.
Right.
But, but the majority of her time is not related to this. It's related to other purposes. So I will confirm on that, but I don't know that. I can't speak verbatim for the law.
So if 5% of her salary is there-
If you're not paying a full salary amount, then you shouldn't be able to pay the benefits.
No, but if there's 5% of her salary coming out of there, then 5% of the cost of-
I will confirm what the rule is, and then also make sure that then I have that answer for you at the next meeting.
So when we see salaries in the revolving funds, those are part-time salaries, is what you're telling us?
Yeah, no one is 100% funded by a revolving fund.
So I'm clear, the questions on the budget, we're gonna run through Kevin, right? My suggestion is, because as we're seeing just right now, one question leads to a second question, that the questions be framed to Kevin, however, using our typical town council at email. So if we see the question-
Right.
We can then respond, and that way, you know, because it could trigger, like, oh, that's, that's a good point. As a follow-up, where we're not deliberating, it's all going through Kevin, but we could see your question, my question, Tom's question, all across the board.
Probably should do it in a separate email string each time you do it.
You can't respond all.
No, no, nobody's gonna be able to respond all. It's just, we're gonna see it in a separate email string, and then they'll say, I just, I have a, I have an additional question. You know, because that also, you know, avoids seven or six step in questions coming to them when we're all thinking the same thing.
Good luck with that.
It's very easy. Just write, you know, town council at Islam et al., blah, 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 and it hits us all, but it's framed to him. As long as we don't hit the reply all button, we should be cool.
So I'm wondering if, for the next two weeks, you, you all will, and I, I've done these kinds of budgets a lot of times, and I've waited, I've been on your side of the table and waited until the next meeting, had all my questions there, and then the staff answered like 90% of them. Then there is takeaway from that meeting of, okay, we didn't have that answer, and, and we're not going to have every single answer, but we'll probably, between Sarah and I and, and the department head, we'll have just about everything. Might it be better for, for you all to take these two weeks, put your notes on, on the budgets? And I will be bringing, I don't know if Sarah brought her, but-
I have mine, it's right there.
We both have our notes from all our presentations from the department heads, and the department heads are gonna be well-prepared. I'm positive. So it might, it might be a more efficient way to do it, to just scribble your notes down, and, and we stay for the duration on the 24th for however long you-
Either way, I mean, I don't care if people come through for-
Whatever you prefer, Riley.
That's easy enough for me. I, that's better, I mean, I don't have to, it worked good last year.
So she might continue with the presentation?
Go. Yes, before we get sidetracked.
So the, the next slide is the supplemental that Denise mentioned in her first part of the presentation. Would you like to speak on this one, Denise, and then I continue, or do you want?
It really is a case of, I just listed all the departments that have any supplemental requests. So those will be something absolutely to discuss, and we have-
They're not funded yet.
They are not funded yet. Right.
And they were not included in those beginning numbers. Okay? Yep. So the very next slide you can see is the LCAT enterprise fund. And it's in the same format that we have to have for the voting, so you can see both the revenue and the expenditures. And you will see that we are anticipating a budget surplus of $3,716. And as mentioned, that this includes the LCAT there benefits as well, because it's a self-sustaining fund. The next slide is our water enterprise fund, again, a self-sustaining fund, and it has the revenue and the related expenses. And you will notice that we do have, the capital outlay amount matches what was submitted for the capital. So depending on what winds up getting approved for the capital, it might fluctuate this number, but I put in 100% there.
And both water and sewer need to be recommended by the public works board?
For the rates, yes. And you will see that the water enterprise fund will be dipping into the retained earnings as of this point, which we had discussed previously. The next slide is the sewer enterprise fund, again, a self-sustaining fund. And again, the capital matches what is on the capital request list, and the retained earnings we do have to dip into again. The next slide is the 2019 recommended capital budgets.
And I can speak to that one.
Projects, excuse me?
As I said in, in my opening statement, this is revised after talking further with Sarah, with Bruce, with IT, with all the department heads, to make sure that we accurately understand what the needs are, prioritize them correctly. All the number ones that you see in the priority list are not, the top one is not more important than the bottom number one. They're alphabetical by department, all priorities one, and then one and a half and two. Tom, you had asked for a little bit of information on each of them, so that's why I added that last column. It should synopsize pretty much what the reason for the request was. And, and again, I, I can answer any questions on that as, as it comes up. I prioritized through a million three in public works with, I mean, in capital projects, which brings us to, if I remember right, to, the two, close to the two and a half, between two and two and a half, which last year we were at 2.2% of the previous year's budget. So that seemed to be a logical cutoff, but certainly depending on how the rest of the budget goes, depends on how, how the capital is done. You had asked, you, the entire council had asked for possible bonding items, and that is the next batch of items on the second page of the capital plan. And then the sewer and the water enterprise fund capital projects.
The next slide is the tax rate over the last 10 years, so you can see the, the trend. And the FY19 tax rate estimated based on this budget, as is without any supplementals, would be $20,000,000. would be $21.80, which is up from $20.94 of the current year budget, so less than a dollar. Okay?
If we approve everything as it?
If, yes, without.
Without the supplements.
Without the supplements.
Not including bonding for any of these other possible projects.
And then the next slide are the revolving funds. So the first table you see are the revolving funds under Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half. That's the solid waste disposal, the Council on Aging and the Health Department. And you will see, I, the town council needs to approve the spending limit. I put this estimated revenues just to give you a background and an idea, but that is not required to be voted on, it's just the expenditures, and it's an amount not to exceed. You will notice that the Council on Aging budget, and that the Health Department budget, that their spending limit is more than their estimated revenues. And the reason being is that they have a fund balance that has been growing there, and so they want to start to use that fund balance for the purposes that it was established for. So we do understand that it's in excess, but it's in order to benefit the program that it was, the money was raised for in the first place.
And again, Sarah, under the, the use of the, oh, it does say salaries on the both.
Yep.
Both the top two. The last one is just those red containers that you use for needles, yeah.
Yep.
So that's all it is.
And those, the first, one, two, three, four, the first four columns of that table are, they match what the proposed bylaw was. And then the last table on that same sheet is the revolving fund, Chapter 44, Section 53D, which is the Recreation. And as I stated, it's not required for your approval, but we wanted to still show you because we, we do have them prepare that. This is the grand total. We did have them prepare this year, each of these by program. So we do have that detailed per program to see, to make sure that they all make sense and that they are at least not running in a deficit.
I, I told the Recreation Director today that she is a superstar. She came in, she tackled that, she's only been, what, three months, I think?
Yeah.
And she got them, and said it will be very helpful in projecting programs in the future. You know, are they paying for themselves? Are they going broke? Is, is it worthwhile keeping the programs? Or do we need to relook the fees? Maybe we're not charging enough? Maybe we're charging too much, so, she's very helpful.
And in 2018, we actually separated that fund into sub-accounts within there to be able to track it by program, and that has proven to be very helpful from the Recreation standpoint and to be able to prepare these kinds of budgets, but also from a review and an accounting standpoint to ensure that things are in the proper uses and being considered, and it has helped tremendously.
It'll help gauge success of certain programs, no?
Say that again, please.
It'll help gauge the success or failure, you know, diminishing return on certain programs. Falling off, you can tell better than just throw it in one bucket.
Yeah, oh, yeah. The one bucket was dangerous.
Exactly, and actually, one of the programs we have decided not to continue going forward due to the rate, the rising requirements, and it's to provide clinics, that there's just an exorbitant amount of requirements with health and all kinds of other things, that's not really what Recreation is supposed to do, is to run those kinds of things. Recreation is supposed to provide recreation programs. So Recreation Department has been working closely with the school, that it's more of rental. If a clinic needs to use it, then they have to rent it and then follow the rules rather than the Recreation Department doing all that legwork for them. And that is the end.
Nope, not yet.
One more question.
Don has a question.
Yeah, putting my media communications hat on, and maybe Don Mack, you might be involved in this. How will this information get to the viewers as well as the public?
I already talked to Don about it.
Please share.
He's going to take a copy of all of this and have it as part of, I'm not sure.
I'm trying to get it in the meeting tomorrow, in this meeting.
So as we talked about a slide, he's going to have it up.
Oh, beautiful.
He's going to insert it in there. So, and he has done that for our past ones, and it's worked out very well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent.
Any other questions at this level? Because we absolutely are here to answer if we need to.
I mean, yeah, it's a lot to review. Appreciate the first pass.
Take a deep breath.
Yeah.
I'm going to crash when I get home, I'm so excited.
Yeah, I mean, you know, for me, you know, and I've done some initial preparing, you know, the size of the total budget's a little bit of a concern for me. It is, you know, and, and we did a lot last year, and we have a lot that we have to do this year, so there are going to be some things where we have to say no to.
Well, a big piece of it is that we're in, in transition of a three-year plan in doing our emergency services pieces, that the council knew last year that it would be a leap, and you don't picture the leap that it's going to be the second and third years, but it is certainly a big piece of it.
Understood.
Well, the good part is, there's a lot of information here to go on.
A lot of details.
And the department heads will be here at the next meeting.
Put you to sleep.
We're on to nine, we don't have any public hearings, which is a change. So we can move right to executive session.
Oh, that's right. We have executive session.
To move into executive session to discuss parts, exchange lease, or value of real estate, per Mass General law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, item number six. As council president, I clear that open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of this body. At this time, we're going to take a roll call vote, and with the purpose of returning the general, open session just to adjourn. Okay? You didn't catch all that?
No.
Not at all.
I don't want to read it all again, but it's a roll call vote. Very easy. Ford?
Yes.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Yes, okay, perfect. Thank you.